To call our committee as a whole meeting to order for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Julie, please call the roll.
Ms. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Raiber.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the pleasure of the Lord.
Blessed are we, for the Father of the United States of America, and with to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, in whose name all will be praised.
All right, we'll move on to item three in our agenda. I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight's meeting. Item three is the hearing of the public. The Norwood Board of Education Policy for Public Participation states, "Further improved communication between the community and the board. Time shall be allocated at each regular or special board meeting to hear public and/or representatives of school-related organizations. Public participation at committee meetings is limited to those invited to speak on specific issues. Each person addressing the board should fill out a form listing name, address, and the agenda or non-agenda item, and hand the form in before the meeting. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and then more than 15 minutes will be devoted to any one topic unless the majority of the board votes to continue discussion." Speakers may offer such objective criticism of school operations and ask concerns there. However, the board will not hear any personal complaints of school personnel or complaints against any person connected with the district. Concerns and comments about individuals should be brought to the attention of the administration. This was approved January 17th, 2019." Before we bring, we do have one person who wants to speak. Before we do that, I would like to make a motion that we extend the five-minute period, if necessary.
I'll second.
Any discussion on extending the speaker time? Julie, please call the roll.
Ms. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
So we do have one speaker for tonight. I would like to invite Sarah Horsley from 1831 Muir Avenue. She is the committee chair for the Norwood School District planning, and she's here to talk to us tonight about that topic.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come here this evening to talk to you all about the levy that we have on the ballot this November 3rd for issue 18. My name is Sarah Horsley, and I am a proud lifelong resident of the city of Norwood. My husband and I are both Norwood High School graduates. I have three sons. My oldest two are recent graduates, and my youngest son is in 10th grade, but he is a future graduate. When I was asked to lead this levy committee, I felt called to accept. Our Norwood schools today provide an amazing education and countless opportunities for our students and our families. I want to do everything I can do to ensure that that's able to continue for future generations. Can everybody hear me? Everybody?
Just speak a little louder for those in the mic.
All right. Maybe I'll speak into the microphone. I'm going to take it off. All right, well, I'm going to sing. All right. During this most uncertain time, I am asking our Norwood community to come together to renew for love and honor. The original levy was passed back in 2011 as a 10-year, $3.4 million annual revenue stream, so it's set to expire at the end of 2021. We are asking our community to renew this levy as a substitute levy on the November 3rd ballot. I've seen firsthand through strong fiscal management what our city schools have been able to stretch with this current levy. We've been providing exceptional education in maintaining our existing class sizes, all while state funding has remained relatively flat. In this overwhelming time of uncertainty, our schools need a stable source of revenue, and that is what this levy would provide: stability. The passage of this levy is absolutely essential to maintain and continue the improvement of our school district. A few facts about the levy. It will protect, preserve, for genera-- sorry. It will not raise taxes. It will generate $3.4 million annually. It will protect and preserve for generations to come. Throughout this pandemic and during our levy campaign, I have been reminded of how many times in even my lifetime our Norwood community has come together as a community to help one another and keep us moving forward. Being in this together is in our roots, and it is what makes me proud to call Norwood my home. You see, history is deep here in Norwood, and our wonderful schools have played a vital role in creating that history as we have served generations of families. This is my grandmother, Helen Pauline Zentmeyer. Our best guess is that she was in the second or third grade when this picture was taken, so it puts it in the early 1920s. She is proudly sitting at her school desk at Allison Street Elementary. She loved going to school and once told me that her Norwood teachers were what sparked her lifelong love of learning and adventure. I can only imagine what her classroom was like back at this time, and I'm sure she would be amazed to see where we're at today. I was debating on whether I should keep this picture in until I got a text this morning from my father reminding me that today is her 104th birthday, so I knew it was a sign. Norwood schools have been educating and inspiring students for well over 100 years, and the passage of this levy will allow that to continue for generations to come. Our Norwood teachers and staff have shown that we are in this together by going above and beyond to make students and families feel connected during these most uncertain times. I appreciate the care and creativity they have used to build these connections while keeping safety top of mind. Making sure our students are getting the proper nutrition with the grab-and-go lunches when they weren't able to attend school. The end-of-year school parade was fun for our entire community. In fact, my Facebook feed was filled with fun pictures as the parade passed by our students' homes. We were able to still continue to have strong events like our families have come to know and expect, like our bounce-back and splash-back to school, as well as our college signing day, which is so important for our senior students. Yes, they looked different, but that connection, love, and care came through loud and clear. Throughout the pandemic, our teachers and staff have shown that our Norwood community is in this together, and we need to protect and preserve by passing this levy. Passing this levy will enable our school district to maintain our strong academic programs and provide up-to-date technology, which is so essential, especially during this time and this new world we're living in. This will prepare our students for life and success after graduation, no matter what graduation may look like in the future. Levy passage will enable the district to continue our excellent learning opportunities through our exceptional teachers, small class sizes, and safe schools for our children. Passing this levy will protect our investment our community members have already made in our school facilities. Our small class sizes allow for that individualized attention, and this levy will ensure our district is able to continue our neighborhood school concept that our families have loved for generations. In this time of uncertainty, I am asking our Norwood community once again to come together by voting yes on issue 18. The passage of this levy will not raise our taxes, but it will provide a stable source of revenue for our district, and we can continue moving forward and serving future generations to come. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Horsley. Now we'll move on to item number four. We have no other requests to address us tonight, so we'll move on to item number four in our agenda, which is our discussion portion. We do have one item in this phase of our agenda, and that is the discussion of a potential parent survey to go back out. Sitting on your desks is a copy of the first rough draft of what the survey could look like. And so as we move through this, we want to make sure that the majority of the board is happy with what the survey ends up looking like, so that it can go out so we can get some results back before next week's, next Thursday's board meeting. So we could do this a number of ways. I'm happy to do it any way that we see fit, but I think just kind of going through and just addressing each question individually, just to make sure that we're okay with it, or we'd like to see a change in the question. You know what? Scratch that. I'm going to back up a little bit. So before that, I did ask Debbie, who has experience with market research, to kind of put this first round together. Do you want to just kind of talk through the survey here before we start?
First, yeah. So the first question that's written is ensuring that the person taking the survey has at least one child attending classes in person. I'm assuming that through email targeting, we can-- let me use-- oh, okay. I'm assuming through email targeting, we will have that list, but it's almost good to double-check to make sure you have the correct body. And the reason I targeted this to parents that have children attending in person is because the virtual students, it's my understanding, are committed through the semester, so I thought that's who we would be targeting. So if they say that they do not have children attending in person, they would terminate from the survey. The second question is asking in which schools the children are enrolled, the child or children are enrolled, and then choose all that apply. And we can use this data to run this called cross tab, so we will be able to look at the different questions. We can look at the responses in total, and then we would also be able to look at them by school. So that's the purpose of the second question. The third question is just an overall statement, which is saying it thus represents your feelings regarding the current school year. And there are three options here. So the first option is, I think we should remain on the current blended plan, meaning attending two days in person and online three days. The next statement is, I think the children should return to school in person five days a week. And the third option, just because I wanted to present all options, is I think the children should be virtual and schools should not be open. The following three questions would only be seen depending on how they answered that question. So essentially, the next three questions say, "You answered this way. Why did you answer that way? Choose all that apply." If I'm being very candid, the reason I'm approaching it this way is because if you let people just explain themselves with open ends, it gets very difficult to tally those and to read through them. So I would like for us as a board to brainstorm on reasons. As you can see, I started some lists. So for example, you indicated that you feel the district should remain on a blended learning plan, which would be obviously the two days in person and three days online. To help us more understand, to help us understand more about that, please choose all the statements. So for example, some of the statements I listed, "I'm not comfortable with my child being exposed to more than 50% of their classmates at a time. The plan seems to be working. Why change it? I am concerned about the upcoming cold flu season. I don't see how social distancing can happen with all of the kids back in the building." So I just started a list of reasons that parents may choose. Again, I put red notes in there saying, "What else?", so that we can continue adding to that list. I did not put a whole lot of time into this, admittedly, this week. So there are three questions to follow up with why people feel the way they do. Skipping down to question number seven, because those three questions are dependent on how they answer number three. Thinking about the current measures that are in place in your child's classroom, how comfortable are you sending your child to school for in-person learning? So this is a very standard five-point scale in market research that goes from extremely comfortable down to extremely uncomfortable. Question eight, this says, "Assuming that the district returns to five days a week, are comfortable with you sending your child to school for in-person learning?" And there again, we see a very standard typical five-point scale. The last question in the survey, I think, is, "Assuming that the district returns to five days a week, which of the following most likely captures how you would respond?" So this is setting the stage for the parents. If you go back five days, what are you going to do? So are you going to send your children for in-person learning? Would you request that the children be enrolled in virtual learning? Or the third question, "I have more than one child. I would allow at least one attendant person, but I would want at least one to enroll in virtual." So I think that would give us a feel, as Raymond mentioned in his email. I think this would give us a feel, you know, kind of how parents are feeling right now with the current situation. And then this would also paint a picture to represent the other side that we're hearing. You know, we've got half of the emails saying, "Stay blended." We've got half the emails saying, "Go back five days." So this gives us a measure of how we're doing currently on the blended, and then this can help us estimate what people are going to do if we should go back five days a week.
All right, so I will open it up.
Should we go question by question?
For any points or changes, comments, and we'll just open up the discussion. Who would like to go first?
Would you like to go question by question as a group rather than just blah, everything?
Yes, let's go question by question. So for question number one, opening up the survey, you know, how do we feel about this question? Should we change the verbiage in this question? Should we terminate the survey depending on how they answered? So who wants to go first?
Did you want to go first?
I think maybe Alice and I both agree on this one. I feel like it definitely needs more. It shouldn't be going out to anybody that doesn't have a student, so to terminate it, no. I don't agree with that. Even our online parents may still have an opinion about the standard of which they wish to return their child back to school. We may need a couple of those tab cross-feed that specifically lend themselves to virtual learners, you know, provided we are back at five days in-person learning by the time second quarter ends. How comfortable do you feel sending your virtual learner back? Would you like to maintain virtual education going into the second semester? This will also help give us a better idea for numbers going forward for how many students may tab off and remain virtual going the rest of the year, and some may wish to return after Christmas break.
Okay, so that was a lie.
I know.
Well, I think--
Well, it's a yes-no online, but there shouldn't really be a no option because the email should be going to the parents and the district. So it's, you know, "Yes, I have a child attending. My child is an online learner." And a tab that might terminate, "My child is an Oaks learner." So that might terminate. If your child's at Oaks and not seeing in-person or online here, that would terminate.
So I think a couple of things. I think that-- So please understand that question one, it's really what we call a follow-up check. We think you have a kid in the district, but maybe you don't, or whatever. You didn't fall off the list when you graduated, maybe you-- Whatever. It's just a follow-up.
Then that would be, you know, "My child no longer attends Norwood schools." You know? I don't know. I feel like it's a decent time for them, and we have some parents who might have a student who is online and a student who is in person who might have opinions of the load, and I think that this is a really good opportunity for us to create a couple of feeder questions that will help lend themselves towards where we're going for third quarter, even if it's only a couple short questions. If we're at five, if we have full five-day, "Are you comfortable coming back to school with your online learner? Do you plan on continuing virtual learning into this next semester?", that kind of thing, just a couple short survey questions. You know, and it could even link back to the end, you know, "Do you support the current plan the district is using?" Maybe it's not for them, but they might say, "You know what? For most of the district, this is working great." It may not be for my child, but yeah, I think they're doing great, or yeah, it's time to go back. So we might be able to feed that in, and I think it'll just be a well-rounded way to include all of our parents fairly. And then, like I said, instead of no, I would just say, you know, "If we accidentally sent you, maybe you were still on the list from the graduates from last year. My student is no longer at Norwood." Or maybe a parent who has removed a student from the district, and they've moved, and they're not on that list anymore. You know, "My student is no longer at Norwood."
Okay, so the way that I hear that is possibly expanding to another subset of questions, and then adding a couple or at least one other answer option to that first question.
So it's yes, online, or no longer at Norwood. Norwood schools, no longer enrolled.
That's how I heard, that's how I heard what you said.
So it's very gray, you know? It's not a black or white. We're online, but it's not black or white. She has to come into the building sometimes, plus she does orchestra, so not just a no.
And there could be a question there, too. Does your online learner come on campus for any services, like IEP services or--
Yeah, there are some online learners who are coming in for speech therapy and things.
We also have some online learners who are participating in sports.
Right. So it's very gray.
So those kids are still participating in person in some form or fashion.
Right.
So you could say, "Well, my online learner may come in just one day a week, but how do you feel about sending them in four or five days?"
I definitely have a different feeling.
That's still an important question.
There's a lot more kids coming, and I have to send them in.
So the way that this works is because this is not policy, and this doesn't affect the day-to-day, we don't have to take official board action on this.
Right.
We just need a general consensus. So this is one of those things where if we get three of us that says, "I like it," then we move forward with it, and then we'll move on to the next question, so that way we can get this done.
Well, that's why I wanted the chance to talk to everybody about it, because obviously it's more than just black and white. Our teachers have gone above and beyond to figure out ways to accommodate our online learners, our IEP learners, and meet any other student where they need help. So I want to make sure that our online learners are not forgotten in this survey simply because they aren't in person every single day or at every--
Okay. So are we good with question one?
Just don't terminate me.
So we will not terminate the survey unless they select they don't have a kid in the district at all.
Right, no longer enrolled would be--
Okay.
And this may be a catch question that we could take advantage of. If your student is no longer enrolled, where did they go? Because some people forget to let us know where their student went.
Well, that's actually a good idea.
We could use this as a capture opportunity to help find some of those students if they move out of the district.
But the survey won't be identified.
Or it could just say, you know--
Please call this number.
Thank you. Please follow up with the office and let us know if you need to update your students' transcripts.
Is that something we could do?
To put it on the termination note.
Well, in theory, yes, but my platform has changed a little bit, so let me see what I can do.
I'm making it complicated, but I'm trying to see if we can help out our office staff who have to follow up with our lost kiddos. Sometimes those transcripts, you don't know where a child--
That's true. Although I don't, I think once the child withdraws, their email would be not part of the group email we're sending out to, so--
But some forget, and they just kind of fall off, and that's what I'm trying to hope to retain. If we have one of those situations, maybe tap them back in. Please contact our office if your child is no longer enrolled so that we can remove you from this list, just as a small follow-up.
All right. Any other things on question one? Question number two, so this is where the survey taker would identify the number of schools. Anything I think we should add there in light of the previous discussion is just an option for the virtual?
It would change, you know, high school virtual, high school, middle school virtual, middle school, and just add an option so that they can--
Or just--
Select which program they're in.
If your kid was in person, if you are online, if your online kid is still assigned to a school, which school are they assigned to? We're still assigned to school, I think, though.
No, I understand that.
And so pick those and not the none. Just make sure they do it.
So to me, that means that the question would read, "And what schools are your children enrolled? If they're virtual, what would--
Fully virtual?
Huh?
You can just say, "Which school?"
Okay.
So instead of none of these, we could have full virtual?
It's going to be a separate question. On the back end, it's going to be, it's going to be separate. If your kid, your child is virtual, what is your child in the school, or something like that? It'll just be a separate question.
Okay, cool.
Trust me, I'll take care of it.
All right. Everybody okay with question two? We'll move on to question three, and this is the question is about what best represents your feelings for the current school year. Does anybody have any issues with the question itself?
Yes.
All right. Do you have any issues?
I'll let Amber go first, and if she says what I'm going to say, then it won't matter.
Okay.
I broke this down for a while, sorry, guys. Okay, so the timing isn't given. So it says, "represents your feeling regarding the current school year." Well, to me, the current school year has only been a couple months long. The question kind of words that, "How would you like the school year to continue going?" Based on the answers, it looks more to the future, not, "How has it been going?" So, and this may end up being the need for two questions. So it could be, "Has your child been successful with the AB method of blended learning?", you know, very success, or "Has this been very positive, somewhat positive?", blah, blah, the five-scale that you use. If someone says, if it's negative, you would route to, "What hurdles have you experienced? Such as like online access problems, support issues, scheduling problems? Has the student had IEP needs?" You know, give them a list of things that could have been potential hurdles. If they were positive experience, you could say, "What have you found beneficial about blended learning? Lots of support, flexibility, and schedule needs. Student does well in online environment with supports in place?", that kind of thing, or give a feedback box. Because the school year so far has been blended learning. It has been AB. So when the question says, "Current school year," and the answers give you three options for the future, they just don't quite add up. So I would say, "How have they done so far?", and then make that next question a, "Moving forward, would you like, you know, do you think we should remain on this current schedule? Should we return to five days in person? Should we go all virtual?" And we kind of need to give a timeline on that, following the same criteria that we've already voted in. that we've already voted in place, like the county numbers, that kind of thing. Figure out a way to word that so that it matches the plan we follow? Or are we discussing changing the timeline?
So can, can you, can you reword that a little bit? Because again, that's, that's a lot.
I know. I wrote a lot down.
I got it, I got it. So I think that, so I think it's just, it's just in my mind, it's a different objective. So she's saying this is focused on moving forward and she's wanting a more clear read on how we've done so far.
A little bit of both. The question worded lends itself to, I mean, this is me as an interpreter. Current school year is what have you experienced so far? Upcoming, where would you like us to go? Those are two completely separate questions. The way I word it is, do you feel the current board plan for matching the county COVID level to our current attendance plans? List the plan, purple, all virtual, red, AB, orange, yellow, five day. System is logical? If yes or no, yes, move on. If no, do you think we should have one of the following? And you could say, you know, return to five days after second quarter or after first, whatever our option happens to be. That could be a potential option. If we need to discuss making a change to that plan, maybe the real issue isn't whether or not we go back five days, it's how we go back five days. Do we need to wait four weeks? Do we maybe need to just wait two weeks instead? So that way we can still give parents plenty of time to notify their employers of a schedule change, but not necessarily have to wait an entire month for that county level if it changes back to orange or yellow. So again, just giving them an option to say like, well, of course we want to go back to five days. To me, it seems a leading answer. Everybody wants us to go back five days. There's not a question that, we want our kids to be back to as much of a normal learning environment as possible, but if there's no timeline, then we are leading the question. And of course, the answer is gonna say, well, yeah, we want five days. When do we want five days? How do we want five days? And can we do it safely and responsibly for our teachers and staff as well as our students?
So does anybody have any other comments about question three or question three A and three B?
I like all that. Again, it's much more detailed than what I would have thought of, but my thoughts basically were, I'm confused by this. Of course I want five days, but yeah, I needed more when and how.
Sally?
I feel like it's okay the way it is. I don't think I would necessarily be confused by it, but I don't necessarily think it would be bad to have it be a little more spelled out. I think it'd give it away. I mean, when I read that question, I think, when I hear current school year, I think the current school year. The current school year is 2020, 2021, though I'm thinking about the year as a whole. But I don't think.
We already have a plan established for that though. The plan is to follow the four-week COVID schedule, match the county.
Sure. And it's asking, and one of the options is, I think we should remain on that plan. That's one of the options.
Right, but if everybody's like, well, of course we want to go back to five, you're leading that answer towards that because everybody eventually wants to get back there.
Right, but the question is asking, what are your feelings about that? So one of them is, I think we should remain on the current plan.
But that makes it look like they want to remain that way for the entire year, when maybe they just want to remain on it for right now, with the end goal being go back to five days when it's safe enough to do so. So that structure will send them to a series of chosen questions and it won't necessarily be an honest reaction or equivalency to what their wishes are.
I don't think I really agree with that.
Or at least if it says, I think the student should return to in-person five days per week.
Once it's safe to do so.
Under what condition? I mean, do they think that we should return to five days per week? Even if we're in purple?
I mean, I think you should, you could, I mean, I do think you could add a qualifying statement there. I think the student, the student should return to school in person five days per week after such and such.
Under a level, whatever level you pick.
Sure.
It just seems like that, the way it's worded makes it sound like we, do you want to stay two days for the rest of the year? Do you want five days the rest of the year? Do you want virtual the rest of the year? And it's, that's not, it's not as black and white as that.
Well, that's what I think that we could change in the first answer there. Instead of saying our current blended learning plan, we could say the current back-to-school plan. And that would kind of entail, I feel like that is a little more clear that that what we mean is the, you know, blended learning on orange.
That's why I wanted, that's why in one of the descriptors that I typed out, I did list it. Do you feel the current board plan matching the county COVID levels is logical? Like, do they agree with this scan? Do they understand it? Relist it just so they know this is the plan. On this plan, you know, do you think we should still follow this plan? It's not necessarily following two days a week, but based on county numbers, we will follow this plan.
I don't think that's fair though, to just lay it out. Do you think this is a good plan? Or what do you think the plan should be? Because I don't think as a parent, I could just say, oh, I think we should go five days a week. And then I don't have the power to make any kind of changes that would make that safe. Do you know what I mean?
Are you saying we shouldn't ask this question? Because that is one of the answers.
No, I'm saying, what she's saying is, do you think this is a logical plan? Do you agree with the plan that we have already? Or do you think we should be doing a different plan?
Well, not necessarily. I'm just saying we should list the plan. Following the current guideline that the board has approved, list the guideline. You know, should we maintain that guideline? Going forward, should we change that guideline? Why? Like it.
So what I'm hearing is it just needs to be more specific.
It definitely needs more specific.
More detailed with timing or with whatever the county, what are your wishes if the county's doing whatever?
Right.
What are the wishes? So it needs to be more specific and.
That's why I'm thinking the compromise might end up being, we may not need four weeks in between. It's not about whether we can go back or whether we should go back, because people want to go back. It's how do we implement it safely while maintaining that standard? I don't think we need to just vote and say red should just be thrown out the window and we should ignore the county numbers. We voted and approved a specific timeline to follow those county numbers for a reason. If we're looking at this and we give no timeline to our parents, it makes it look like you either want to keep two day for the rest of the year, five day for the rest of the year, or virtual the rest of the year, because there is no established timeline on this.
Yep. No, this is helpful. So like I said, this to me, like I said, this was intended to be an overall, just a pulse on the situation. So what I'm hearing is that we need to have more details in this and I can, I can do
And that's why I was thinking we should add the question of the current school year, thinking of how we've done so far. Has your child been successful in this method? Have they been unsuccessful in this method? And here's some options as to why. And we need to find out how we're doing. We need the pulse on that too. If we're not serving our students' needs, we need to know. And that might be a safe place to put a comment box for a teacher. If you had a good experience, tell us why. If you've had a negative experience, tell us why. So if we do end up for some preventable reason going purple and we have to be all virtual, we can take that feedback and apply it directly and say, okay, here's what we got. These are working. This isn't working. And let's make sure we tweak that for our virtual learners.
Well, yeah, we're just, we're gonna kind of want to, we want to be careful with open end comment boxes because as the committee will tell you from the first survey, it's, it's quite a mess.
Well, and you can, and you can limit it for number of characters, but if you're like, okay, my student had a positive experience.
Yeah.
Give us a couple of things that you liked about it. Short comment box. And if it's a negative experience, short comment box, you know? Oh, we had connectivity issues. That's something we can work on. We can try to fix, you know?
Well, that could be a question that they check.
Exactly.
We could, like I kind of have started here. I think, you know, as a team, we can kind of figure out what the reasons are. And it's much easier if the parent has the opportunity to check the box than it is to type it out. It gives us a quantitative number.
Yep.
As opposed to us trying to read 400-plus comments. So wherever we can come up with these bulleted lists, it's much better for, for everyone.
So in, in light of that, how does that change the next three questions?
I know, I thought the what-else's were comment boxes.
No, it was.
No, they'd be checklist.
Yeah, it was for us to kind of come up with more ideas.
Right, I learned that tonight.
These are brainstorm notes that I've got, so I just.
And this, this was 10 minutes, to be quite truthful with you.
Right.
I haven't thought a ton on this, but.
I'd say for 10 minutes, it's pretty good.
So, so in, in kind of splitting that level of detail out of when and how, that kind of changes the next three questions, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's just gonna.
Only slightly though. Because I still think that if, if we split that into two, you're, you're gonna find out, okay, how have you done so far? And then four kind of becomes the, a new version of what we were talking about of like three A is, okay, you, instead of you indicated that, make that a, you know, the district using this current plan, how do you, how comfortable are you following this, the current plan? And then you can say, I'm not comfortable, but we can come up with bullet points. I do feel like some of the wording on these, I know you came up with them quickly, are focused on pretty negative sides on that. So it might not be that they're not comfortable with 50 more, 50% more of their classmates. It's, and the plan seems to be working, why change it? It kind of sounds like a, a little, I don't know, a little off-putting? More of, you know, I'm very happy with the services that my teachers are providing and the safety measures the district is, is using, rather than why change it? It's a very much, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I would expand the cold and flu answered just slightly. I'm concerned with the upcoming cold and flu season impacting illness while COVID is still prevalent or something like that. Because those numbers could definitely impact our attendance in the fall and winter.
So I think what would be helpful, if this is okay with Brandon and everybody else, I think what would be helpful is where I have these red what-else's, if you just kind of want to think about that for the next 24 hours or so, and maybe just email me some, some other reasons and I can incorporate those and that way we're not trying to think of every possible scenario here.
Right now, right.
Because this is, this is really gonna take me some time to get this programmed anyway. So, so we have time. We have 24 hours at least to think about that.
Is that fair?
Sounds good.
Okay, so that, that covers questions four through six. So let's jump down to question number seven. And that's thinking about the measures that are in place, how comfortable are you? So, so seven and eight are the five point extremely comfortable to extremely uncomfortable.
So I think what we'll probably do, Brandon, is question seven is more focused on what's happened so far. So I think we'll probably move that up higher with like the how is your child done so far on blended? I think we'll talk about the current altogether.
Okay.
And then move into what we just talked about. And then we'll finish up with the, assuming we move to five days. So yeah, we can still discuss question seven, of course, but just, it's gonna come, it's gonna come.
Earlier in the survey.
Earlier, earlier, that's the word, earlier.
So with seven, it's, it almost sounds as if we're talking about moving it into a five day, because it says with the current measures, you know, blah, 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 how, how comfortable are you for in-person learning? Makes it sound like moving them to, using the current standards of cleanliness or protective measures, how, how comfortable are you sending them back to five days a week?
I don't read that at all. That's, that's not.
Are you talking about number seven?
Seven doesn't read that way at all. So seven is thinking about the current measures that are in place for your child's classroom. How comfortable are you sending your child to school for in-person learning? So they're talking about the current situation.
It would need to say, how comfortable have you been sending your student?
Right, but I don't, I, I didn't read that question and think five days a week.
I, I, only because of the tense. If you say how, using these current measures, how comfortable have you been sending your child for in-person learning? Because it's been up till this point. Saying how comfortable are you kind of implies that you're saying, okay, using what we have going forward implies a change.
But nothing about saying in-person learning is implying blended versus five days. That's just students in schools.
That's what my question was gonna be about.
Because it's not, because it's not descriptive enough, I would establish that as how comfortable have you been? Because it implies what we've been doing so far. Have you been comfortable with everything that we have had in place?
Right. No, no, that, that's fair. I mean, if, if.
Only a tense issue, because it can be seen.
Right. I, I just, I didn't read it that way.
Interpreter.
I'm just wondering, okay, about the current measures. Is it the sanitizer, the way we stand apart from each other? So there's like, how many kids are in the room is like one thing to me because either we're AB or we're five day. Or it's about our sanitizer and how far apart our desks are and all of the safety measures we're taking and we're taking your temperature and blah, blah, blah. So is it talking about both of those things or just the sanitizer and the taking your temperature and everybody's wearing a mask and? See, I see these things as two different things. How many kids are in the room is one thing. And then all these other great things we do, the Plexiglas and all that business is this other thing. Because the number of kids can change.
Right, the number of kids can change, but the measures will stay the same.
But that's where number eight comes in. So that's why I wanted to change the tense on seven to being past tense, because eight specifically talks about the next step. If we were to return, how comfortable are you with those main, with those same safety measures? So if seven is focused on how happy have you been, eight focuses on, okay, if those are still maintained, how happy will you be? So that's that compromise. If we change the wording on seven, we don't have to change anything on eight. They work very well together.
If, if you select in the survey that you're a virtual learner or your child's a virtual learner, would you even see question seven?
No, well, it depends because they will say if they're virtual 100% or if they're virtual and in-person. So if they are in-person, they will see these. If they are totally virtual, I'm not gonna ask about how things are currently, because they don't, they haven't been here.
So should we add the word your child's in-person classroom?
We can.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with, with changing the tense if it makes it easier to read.
I think they just, seven and eight go well together if it establishes, because otherwise somebody could not, they don't know that eight's coming, talking about the future tense. So I feel like if you're like, okay, how, how comfortable have you been with what we've been putting in place? Eight comes along, how comfortable are you going forward?
No, I, I, I agree with Debbie's thought process of moving seven earlier in the survey, because they're talking, they're in the thought process of, you know, where they are currently.
And I know, I think seven and eight go great together.
Well, but they don't if one's talking about, if, if we want to make it more to what has been done to date and then moving forward, they really don't belong together. So I will break them up, but like I said, I can, I can, I think in theory, I can put like a paragraph, like the next couple of questions we're going to ask you are focusing on what has happened from August 24th or whatever the date was to today. You know, so think about this time period. Okay, now we've done this, now let's talk about this. And I'll, I'll put things in there.
Okay.
But, you know, like I said, I, we, we use a couple of different tools at work. The tool that I'm gonna use for this one has changed dramatically. So it's going to take me some time, but I will.
That's okay.
Will do my best to.
I would rather take time and put out something that is correct, is, does not appear to any parent in any way biased and is shaped to where we're actually going to get functional feedback. That's the goal here.
I will do my absolute best to make sure we have like introduction paragraphs. Now we're gonna talk about this. Now we're talking about this. Now we're talking about this. I will make it as clear as I possibly can.
If it reads like a geometry test where we have those long word problems, people will glaze over and we will not get accurate responses. So I want to make sure it's clarified and clear.
Please, and then ask me how many apples they're getting.
All right, so that leads us down to question number nine in this draft, which is assuming that the district returns to school five days per week, which of the following likely captures how you'll respond? Is that okay as is, or do we need to amend that as well?
I just need a when, so the parents aren't like, wait, what? When are we returning to five days? And are they saying we're returning to five days? Like, they're gonna freak out.
Yeah, as it sits, nine and eight are basically the same question, just one has a five chart and one has responses. So I would take the opportunity to make nine, uh, a timeline question. Keep eight general.
Okay.
You've liked these things, how comfortable are you? Great. If we do that, when?
Right.
So, so what is the timeline? Like, what do we want to discuss? Do we want to throw dates out there? Do we want to reference county colors? Like, what do we want to reference?
So we're just saying, according to our current plan, uh, with the color chart, when it is time to ra, return to five days? Just specify that it is according to that, is it?
So, so that's the thing that Amber brought up earlier, is does it need to be that?
Does it need to be four weeks out?
Does it need to be four weeks? Could it be two weeks?
Could it be three weeks?
Wait, and do we want our parents telling us that?
A parent could answer, potentially answer the survey and say, they want their kid back as soon as possible, like immediately, like yesterday.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, that, that, that could be one of the answers. I mean, we're just looking for feedback of what, how people feel.
I want to make sure we give our parents plenty of time to notify employers if we do have a county change.
I get that, I'm just saying that, you know, that as, as far as the timeline, I mean, that could range anywhere from immediately to two weeks after the color level changes.
So what if those are our options? You know, uh, you know, would you be comfortable sending your child back immediately? Would you be comfortable sending them back, um, you know, following the same scale of four weeks after a color change? Three weeks after a color change, or two weeks after a color change? Any less than that, you can't really schedule out with your boss. It's hard to do.
No, but then again, I think another option could be, you know, um, start of the second semester.
Yeah.
Right?
Going back the second semester as we originally stated, even if we're red?
Well, I mean, again, you could complicate that, again-
Because this week we're still red, so we're like at number 11 right now.
Remember, remember, all we're looking for is the current pulse of how people feel at this particular moment, right?
Which is why I think shortening that in-between time gives us a potential cushion to go back second quarter.
Right, so, so we're just, we're just, you know, looking for three to five possible timeframes. I mean, we, I mean, we can, we can really get detailed with that, right? But then you're throwing a lot of people to try and choose from, and then it kind of complicates how they really feel.
And I would say maintain four weeks, uh, shorten to three weeks, shorten to two weeks.
Right, so I, so-
Between county levels.
So, you know, thinking about it, it could be as soon as possible, um, how it's currently outlined in the plan, right? Or we need to extend this out longer. I mean, you know, and, and maybe a couple others, no more than five. We should have no more than five.
Right. I'm, I'm thinking three, because I feel like that is establishing as soon as possible. Because, again, people need time to notify employers. So I feel like it should be maintain four weeks between county changes, shorten to three weeks, shorten to two weeks. And let those be our options, and see if people are comfortable shortening that leash for notification.
Well, I, I know how you feel, Alex.
Panic attacks.
I, I, I think, I, I think, you know, since we're just judging the opinion of, of people filling out the survey, you know, I, I think an earlier option than that should, should be a viable choice.
We have to give people time to adjust their work schedules.
I understand that.
So two weeks notice is about as short as you're gonna get at most employers.
We're not going to change this just because you wanted it. We just want to know how you feel.
We're just looking for feedback.
Right.
Right, we just want to know how you feel.
We just want to know how you feel.
We're not gonna throw your children in the sharks.
But if we get a county change, I want to find out, do parents want us to wait a whole month for that, from that county change?
Sure.
Would they like a shorter timeline? Are they comfortable with a shorter timeline? If, if we do one week, you, you have a lot of parents who are, have set schedules who are not going to be able to notify their employers. And I don't want to put that on them to try to do that, to get kids back, you know, Monday morning, let's go. That's not fair to our community.
I, I agree with that. I, I do, I do, I agree with that.
I just, like, you can say you want it done yesterday, but-
Right, and we know a lot of folks in the community have voiced that. They want it done right away.
Right, we're, we're just asking-
We're not gonna really do that.
All right, are there, so the, the other item that we could add to the survey at the very end is, is just that open, and like a general open-ended comment box, just because I do know that there are individuals in the community who do not feel comfortable, um, sending us official correspondence, right? They're, they just have that adverse public speaking, don't want to be notified. And the survey would give them the opportunity to kind of send a short message to us anonymously.
We can put that at the end.
So will this, and I don't, this would be a question for you, Debbie, with the cross-tab selections, um, will this let you answer differently for your different students? So if I have a high school student and I have an elementary school student, will it let me answer twice appropriately? Because maybe I'm comfortable sending my high schooler, but maybe I'm not comfortable sending my third grader. Um, will it let me answer those questions twice?
As it is written, no.
Okay, is there a way to do that? Oh, you have more than one student.
Um, is there a way, yes. Is there a way that I can do that with my, under my own power for free? Probably not.
I'm just wondering, or if there's a way that parents can maybe take it more than once if they have more than one child? Like, can we send them two links? Or is there an easy way to accomplish that, so we get accurate numbers? Because if they're trying to generalize for their household, but those generalizations may not meet their needs, is there a way to say, okay, well, I'm going to send you a survey for your elementary school student?
I think there, I think it is possible to have the-
Do you know what I'm saying now?
It's possible, it's possible. There's a couple of ways to do it. Let me figure out, again, what I can do without support from the company that does this. Let me see what I can do as a self-serve customer and for free use of the platform. Let me, let me figure that out. There, there's, there's a way to do it, it's going to take time. I don't know how quickly we're, if, if we want feedback by next Thursday, this probably needs to get out sooner than later. Um, I am not allowed to work on this during work hours. So i, it's going to take time.
Right.
I mean, and any change, any complication that we do to it is possible, it's just going to take time.
Okay.
But I, I will put some serious thought into that and play with it a little bit.
I, I just heard that feedback on the last one, they're like, whoa, but I didn't want to, want to answer the same way for my kid, you know?
Yeah, it's almost like I need to answer the question for Suzie and I need to answer the question for Steve. Yeah, I mean, it needs, it needs to be that way. I agree with you 110%. It's just, how quickly do we want to do it and do we want to spend money on it?
And if it's easy enough, like I said, maybe we just need to send them two links and say, you know, if you have multiple students that you are not comfortable answering as a household and you want to take it again for your separate student, here's another way.
Well, it would need to be told to them then. If you have more than one child, you need to take this twice. It needs to be consistent.
Okay.
For the data to be good, it would need to be, we would need to say, take it once per child. Um, and it would be the same link, but yeah, but we, uh, let me think about it.
Okay.
All right, any other comments related to the potential parent survey?
I feel like we got through that really well.
Yeah. Okay, so we are all in agreement that a parent survey is needed and a good thing for this board and, and the district?
I hope so.
Okay, so, so, um, so as Debbie had mentioned, um, over the next day, anything that you think in addition? Um, let's, let's get that correspondence over to her so she can build it into the revised survey. And then, um, the way that it worked last time, when we did this over the summer, so we got the majority of the responses back in the first 24 hours.
Yeah, most of the people that are going to respond will respond within 24 hours. When we send a reminder out, we will get about 50% more. So, um, it, it's quick. If, if people are going to participate, they will quickly.
All right, does the administration have, since you guys have seen this survey, is there anything that the administration sees or is concerned about or would like to comment on?
I do like the open comment box. I think that will give us some valuable information.
Okay, Christina?
The only thing that I noticed is I wondered if you would consider, instead of saying virtual, um, change it to working remotely or remote as it applies throughout it, because I was afraid that they might assume they mean the virtual program rather than working remotely. Because on the three days, we work remotely from home. So it's just a verbiage, and I wrote it down, so I'll share it with you.
Okay.
Just like, I just thought that might be clearer to the families. That was the only thing I noticed.
Yeah, you're right, we need to make sure we're really clear on edgenuity versus-
Yeah, I just thought that might be helpful.
Okay.
Could that be in that first question, are you an edgenuity learner?
Yeah, probably.
Well, edgenuity is only one of the platforms we use. We use some other things too. So you can still call it the Norwood Virtual Program when you're talking about that program. But the other places, when you're referring to working three days remotely from home with our blend-in model, like I just, so I wrote those down throughout. So I'll share with you and you can see out.
Yeah, that's a good build, yeah. There's been some confusion on that since the beginning, so I think that's really good to call it out.
Yeah, good catch.
All right.
My only concern is with multiple links for each family. Having four kids, I wouldn't sit and complete a survey four times.
That's why I'm wondering if there's an option, I'd like to answer for my household in one survey.
Yeah.
But for some parents who know their kids need two different things, you know, maybe allow them the opportunity, rather than lock them out from one, let them take it again if they wish.
I, I need to figure out how to make it one survey and to capture each child in that survey. I, that's what I need to figure out. And it, it can be done, I just, it can be done, but-
Or if they can choose one-on-one answer? If you have two kids, feel free to choose one-on-one answer.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put some fun into it and play, I'll, I'm just gonna have to play around with it for a little bit.
Um, so one thing that we want to make sure that we do is, is that we include our youngest learners in the survey, so our, our preschool teams and our preschool parents.
Include?
Preschool?
Oh, okay.
I don't think that'll be an issue now. It was an issue back in June because they weren't in the system yet. But now that they're enrolled, we'll definitely get their opinion.
Okay.
I have a question about the preschool kids. They had a mandate for a while that they could only have nine kids in a classroom. Do they still have that mandate? No. Like, when we go to five days, did, do they have the option? I mean, I know they only go four, but do they have the option of going all four now? Because of that restriction is gone or?
They can have more than nine in a classroom. That has been lifted. But it's awkward to have preschool going four days a week and not your other children, so-
But, and they're doing two and two?
Yes, they mirror-
But when we do go back to five, they'll be four?
Yes, they'll be back to five.
All right, um, if there's no more discussion, is there any more discussion on the survey? Does anybody else have anything? All right, we'll move on to item number five in our agenda, and that is personnel superintendent running.
Thank you, President Atwood. We do not have a whole lot tonight. Item one, we have Sarah Leib and Catherine Hambley. They are being the technology, uh, individuals for their building. Avenues for Success, we have two individuals hired as club advisors. And having talked to Mrs. Ferguson, I believe that Avenues for Success is now fully staffed. Then, uh, the next item, item three, are our civil service staff who have been hired as, um, coaches. And I know that, uh, Alex Hines is here. If anyone has any questions about any of the individuals who've been hired for, um, a lot of winter sports are showing up. Well, if no questions, then item number four is simply a correction where this individual is the part-time eighth grade basketball coach, not the seventh grade coach. So we are making a correction from a previous meeting. And that concludes my recommendations.
All right, any discussion on the employment items? All right, we'll move on to item six in our agenda, that's our policy committee. Uh, Mrs. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I tend to do at the committee meeting, I am going to defer to Mrs. Justin.
Okay, so, um, as you can see, we have a bit of, number of policies to go through tonight, but I've clustered them in groupings. The first 15 all are connected by one theme. And, um, as you all know, the final Title IX regulations were made available in May, on May 6th of 2020. And so all of those, um, affect a number of our policies. And so they, they went into effect on August 14th of this school year. So the first, um, 15 policies defines and shares procedures for following those Title IX regulations. The first one is nondiscrimination, so we will update some information in here, and then it just highlights that we will have separate policies, um, after the AC nondiscrimination policy. ACA is next, and it is, has a partner policy, ACA-A. And they used to be combined, but now they're run separately. So that's why you see ACA is listed as a new policy. And ACA-A is also a new policy because they've changed so dramatically because of, not in terms of the intention, but just because of the Title IX regulations. So again, um, both of those are required policies. We update, um, policy ACA-A, um, based on who our coordinators are for the school year. And at any time in the school year, that can be updated depending on the personnel. When you update that coordinator role, that doesn't have to be approved again by the board, but it's just an update to that policy. So AA and ACA-A, again, used to be combined, but now they're separate. And they just highlight the, um, they highlight some more of that Title IX work that the district needs to put in place. ACA-A is dash R is the regulation that follows that. And this is a new regulation, and it is rather lengthy. And the intent on that regulation is to provide procedures for the school district to follow when there is any, um, grievance filed. So those are just procedures that we'd be following throughout that process. So that is ACA-A dash R. Next on the list is GCPD, which is suspension and termination. We've had a policy about working with all things regard to staffing. This just updates it to include Title IX process as well in that. That's just a, a way of, um, keeping all of our policies connected. Policy GDPD, which is again, um, used in regards to the work we do with staff members, highlights Title IX and that grievance process is added into that. Policy JEGA, which is permanent exclusion, talks more about students and how Title IX and the grievance process relates to disciplining students. So you'll see that in the first part of that page that just talks about that Title IX reference. Policy JFCF, um, we looked at this policy and re-adopted it a number of times. This is our hazing and bullying policy. And, and this regulation for Title IX has been added to that first page as well, and just, um, highlighting how we would change the process. There's also a complimentary regulation that goes with that, hazing and bullying, JFCF dash R. And again, just connecting it to Title IX. The next policy is JG, which deals with student discipline. So it shares the policy in regards to, um, employees knowing about behaviors and how to follow that in regards to Title IX process. JGD deals with student sus, suspension, and again, talking about how it relates to Title IX and those processes to follow. The next policy is JGDA, which discusses the emergency removal of a student. And again, how it relates to Title IX regulations and how a student would be removed based on any of those regulations. JGE is student expulsion, again, coordinating it with the Title IX processes and talking about how we discipline the students that are part of that process as well. And, um, KLD is the public complaint, complaint, um, policy. It shares the line about any, any complaint in regards to anything that has to do with Title IX, the process will be followed for all complaints. The next one is the regulation that goes with that. Again, just saying that any complaint related to Title IX work would follow that same grievance process. So those first 15- same grievance process. So those first 15 are all related to that Title IX ruling that changed as of May 6. The next set of policies, and there are six policies, deal with everything affected by COVID. And the first policy is the use of face coverings. So this policy is EBEA. And so we've added, this is a brand-new policy, and we've added this policy to be in effect for this particular school year. And then if there's a need for it to extend, you would make that decision as a board. This policy just highlights that we do use face coverings in this district, and it outlines that, what the rulings are about face coverings. It was a required policy, but it's not the only thing required by all the COVID regulations. The next set of policies that are new or changed because of COVID, the first one is our Family Medical Leave Act expansion. So this is a new policy, GBRA. And it was customized based on Mrs. Ronan and Mrs. Camp House's recommendations that work with our FMLA work. So they, they are experts in that. So this policy is a new policy for our district. The next policy that goes with that is the GBRA regulation. And we customize that to fit our needs for the FMLA work as well. The policy that talks about emergency paid sick leave goes with that as well. It's GBRAA. That is a brand-new policy. It is for, as a result of COVID-19. All of these policies aren't anything different than what's been communicated to our staff members from the treasurer's office. So none of this information is new. It's just required to be adopted. And then the regulation is GBRAA, emergency paid sick leave. And again, that was communicated to our staff, but needed to be board-approved. Those are our COVID policies. The remaining three policies, the first one, and they have a connecting theme as well. The first one is JED. So it deals with, this is somewhat connected to COVID as well, student absences and excuses. So because of COVID, sometimes students might need to stay at home. So they've added those kinds of examples as our ability to excuse a student. We've already been doing that appropriately and marking it appropriately, but it added that as part of our work. The next policy is JF, Students' Rights and Responsibility. And that is a policy we've had, but the change for it is a new Ohio Revised Code reference. And it's based off of the Ohio Students' Religious Liberties Act of 2019. So that policy, the Students' Rights and Responsibilities, the Community Use of School Premises, which is KG, and we've already had that policy in place as well. And the last policy about distribution of materials, KJA, are all connected to those Ohio Student Religious Liberties Act of 2019. So again, three sections of policies, one on Title IX, one on COVID, and one on the Religious Liberties Act of 2019. So are there questions about these policies? Or you could look at them and then we could handle questions at the next meeting as well. This is only our first opportunity for you all to view them as a board, and there is a big grouping of it. But we thought it might be more helpful to cluster them in teams so that you can understand why we have so many at one time.
I do have one question and comment. So this is surrounding policy EBEA.
Okay.
Which is the use of face coverings. So my, my stance on policy work has been only to adopt policies that are absolutely necessary. So if you think about, if you think about the policy work of the board, think of how it's the umbrella or the roof of a structure, right? And, and when I read this policy, I'm not against it, right? I just don't think it lives in policy.
Okay, fair enough.
So I think, I think this document right here would be more served the district, especially since, you know, conditions can change. And, you know, we don't want to be coming back and having to reevaluate and mess with this policy all the time. This would be better served in the handbooks, in our employee handbook and in our student handbook about how we handle face coverings for people coming into our buildings. So I don't, I don't, I don't see this as a policy. I see this as a section in our handbooks. And by doing that, we don't have to worry about it being here next year and us having to eliminate a policy in case we forget. This allows the administration the ability to change, change this as needed as, as the situations change. I don't know how anybody else feels about this.
That came up with Mrs. Cole, like what's the time limit on this? So we felt like, well, we'd stick with a year. We would try to only commit to what's going on currently with the ability, of course, to always change. But that is a thought that came up in our conversation when Mrs. Cole and I were going through all these policies.
You know, if you look at, if you look at the cross-reference statute for this, I mean, it's, it's in locker search, right?
Yeah, I don't think we need it because I feel like if the county mandate says that in these places you wear masks, then we follow the county mandate.
We already...
So it's already a rule we have to follow. I don't think we need a separate three-page policy dictating the fact that we should be following what the county says we should be doing. If the county says masks for right now, we wear masks. If, if that changes by spring and they say we don't need them anymore, great. If they say we still need them, then we still need them. It's just, we don't need extra paper in that book. It's already this thick.
But did you say it's required by the state?
This one was a recommendation.
Oh, it's a recommendation.
And it doesn't, and it, in and of itself, it doesn't meet the need that our plan did. Like since we had to, Mrs. Ronan had to submit that plan to OD that talked about what we would do with face covering. So they were clear in that, that just having this policy isn't good enough. So it's just a way to, it is not required, to answer your question. There are options. But it is something they recommended that schools put in place. But I certainly understand what you're saying.
That's understandable.
Yeah.
How does the administration feel if we move this into, into the administrative realm, include it in the handbook?
I thought we already put the mask thing in the handbook.
We, we did. You are correct. We did. We knew this was coming. So in our back-to-school plan, yes, we included the mask-wearing as part of it.
And we've got signs all over the buildings.
Yes.
The entrances of the office. I feel like it's posted and, and pretty clear. I don't think we need to add it anywhere else. I'm with Brandon. More, more paperwork is not needed here for this issue.
Especially under locker search.
I don't think it helps or strengthens anything.
What did you say in the final?
I don't think it helps or strengthens anything to just put it into another place. It's just going to be one thing that we forget about in 10 years when we go through the book. We'll be like, oh yeah, we don't need that anymore.
And we're out of compliance because we haven't been wearing masks two years from now.
Exactly.
I think it says that we give you the power to say if we have to wear them or not.
Right.
So it's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
My, my recommendation is that we take this out and we deal with it administratively.
Okay.
If it's not required by law for us to have this, if this is just a recommendation.
It is not at this time, so we have an option.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on changes to the policy? I know that, that the cross-reference for Title IX, I mean, that's huge.
It is.
I want to read through them a little more first, but yeah.
And if you notice, in regards to Title IX, we do have information on our website under the board, where there's actually the slides from our law firm.
And that concludes my report.
All right. So just so that everybody is reminded, we do a multiple reading of any policy changes. So at the board meeting next week, we will have the first official reading for these policies. This will allow the public to comment on any policy changes so they can provide feedback. And then in November, you know, if everything is good and we do the second reading, these policy changes will be adopted at that point in time. All right. So let's move on to item number seven, which is our finance committee. Mrs. Camp House?
Thank you, Mr. President. My CFO report is attached to the agenda along with other financial reports from September, as well as the change order listings for all of our active renovation projects. You will notice that my CFO report has a new format based on a new software we are using for the five-year forecast. I think the new format will be more informative for the Board of Education, our administration, and our taxpayers. Our September financials still show the extremely slow receipts of revenues this year. Our real estate settlement was delayed due to property tax deadlines being extended. This delay has a ripple effect that has delayed our property tax allocations and our payment in lieu of tax payments. At this time, I have no indication that we will not meet our estimated revenue goals. They're just slow. Because of the slowing of our revenues, our cash balance is almost $1 million less at the end of September than the same time last year. All Board of Education members are registered for the OSBA Capital Conference. It is completely virtual this year. On November 5, I will get more information on how you will log in, and I'll forward that to each board member. The Capital Conference is November 7 through the 10. 7.02 appropriation resolution, this is our current budget that you're approving. 7.03, we have a transfer for an old account that went negative. We are no longer using it, so we will transfer the $601.84 just to zero it out. And 7.04, accept the bid for CenterPoint Health Center. Our bid opening does not happen until Thursday, so this is a holding spot for our regular board meeting. This is the health center at the high school project. Once we have the bids, the lowest appropriate bid will be attached to next Thursday's agenda for board approval. And that's all I have for finance.
All right. So the only thing that I have here for this is because, because of the slowing of the receipts of revenues, this begins to start putting us dangerously close, in my opinion, to the threshold that we set ourselves for, that would trigger the treasurer and the superintendent to come up with a plan to make sure that we're solvent. Right? Because we set, we set that limit last year. We re-adopted a limit that says that, you know, we have to have 90 days of cash on hand. And I believe that's what, $8 million-ish?
I think it is around there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if revenues from delayed property taxes come in, and that continues and that pushes out, and we're still using our cash reserves, that may push us into that trigger threshold. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware that this could happen, you know, especially if it gets pushed out another month or two, right?
We have already received our tax allocations. They came in this week. So I'm not worried about those anymore. But it's always those TIF payments, a payment in lieu of tax, is a convoluted billing process that we have to go through and it takes some time.
Correct. So, so, you know, I understand why we're getting close to the threshold, but it's just something I want to make sure that we recognize that, you know, in our policy, if something is triggered, you know, we may end up having to deal with something because of a delay in, in tax revenue.
Exactly.
Any other comments on items? Nope? All right, we'll move on to item number eight, which is adjournment. And before we adjourn, I know this isn't part of the agenda, but I do want to mention that tomorrow is the 50th birthday for our Williams Avenue Elementary Principal, Mr. Mark Gabbard.
Oh.
Who is sitting here in the audience. So an early happy birthday tomorrow.
He's like, woo-hoo.
So, yeah, but I'm not going to have the meeting tomorrow, so. Right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second.
One motion.
All right. Call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?